And you're on. This one on.
Everybody ready?
And we're on.
Just watch, hold up.
Yeah, that's on. You hear a little...
Okay, you're getting it big enough?
Yep.
Good enough. I'd like to call me and the rural township trustees, so our special meeting. Please join me in opposing the motions. Opposing the motions is to reply of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to its power. Okay. Please follow the rule.
Trusty Ray.
Yeah.
Trusty Ballard.
Here.
Trusty O'Brien.
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda to discuss, consider and take action regarding damages caused by tornado storm event 314, including dumpsters, roofing, and siding. The dumpster, just everyone's clarification of where we're at, is after township call. When I checked it yesterday, I didn't check it today, but when I checked it yesterday, there was nothing happened. Put it up at all. And it was, our plan is to keep it until it gets full. So we don't plan on sending it back, but we will maintain it there until it gets full. And then we can decide what we want. Get it again, get another one again.
Trusty Ballard, thank you for that update. I have not posted to inform the residents either on the website or on social media because there were still a couple of outstanding items. I wanted to ensure we had an agreement on who I posted. Do you mind if I ask those questions now?
Uh huh.
Okay. We had previously discussed the potential of just having certain hours that residents can come to put the material in the dumpster. And that perhaps that we would want it to be manned during those hours. Do we still want that? Or do we want to just give hours, not man? Because we have cameras at the fire station over hours. Do we want to be, have it available to residents?
We don't have a way to secure it when it's not manned. Other than people from the fire department might have a lookout on the door or something.
Mm-hmm.
And see it. So I don't know that manning it or not manning it makes sense.
Well, should we give them recommended hours for them providing, bringing it over? Or is it, do we just say the dumpster is available for use?
And the concern is if their stash is wasted, we got to take it out and let it be removed.
Yeah. I do have the notation that ensured I was saying no tires, no hazardous waste, no toxic materials, or flammable materials. The other thing was initially when we were talking about the dumpster, we were saying that we wanted to ensure that we emphasized that it was only inorganic material related to the storm damage. Do we want to limit that and say that it should be only inorganic material related to the storm damage? Or should we say dumpster is available?
I think we should say the former. Let's see how full it gets. I'd also like to include for township residents.
For township residents, yeah. Okay. That's not a problem.
For hours, I could see it being more limited, but I don't want to open generally speaking after dark.
Should we recommend or advise them to come during daylight hours?
No hazardous waste or that sort of stuff. No organic, organic stuff should be taken to well press.
Mm-hmm. I have posted about press and that being an option for residents. I was able to get the necessary information for that, so that's not a problem.
And of course, another option is to schedule a no cost large item pickup with Ron Key. They can come and pick it up and look over that. The same thing with the governor's. They can put their organic waste up there. With their normal trash and all that can go away.
Okay.
With normal trash.
Yep. Okay, that's it. That's all I have.
So are you going to put that on the website?
Yes, I will. I've posted all the information, both on the website and to Facebook, pointing them to the website.
It'd be nice if we could put a sign up on our other job of the dumpster to say none of these things. And that's what, put the same information out of the way. It'd be nice if we could do something like that.
Let's see, maybe, maybe you can check with Jesse and see if he has any ideas. He's pretty creative. So he might have it.
There's an easy way to do it.
I mean, you could just create a sign and put it on a ticket.
Right, yeah.
But this, this is great. So this is good information, have it out on Facebook. A follow-up of the resident who was inquired with the residents who were inquiring about the dumpster. And then I'll post the website. That's all I have for the dumpster.
Okay. And also in the phone call yesterday, the PNA indicated that they were ending their phone calls yesterday regarding trash pickup. And they also indicated that we needed to get our form in, which we've gotten it in. That's in place for showing the damages. And actually, the governor's asking for federal help, which came up in terms of repairs and that sort of thing. Now, where that goes, we can always see. And we, the best we could do was just estimate things. We don't have any detailed costs or any of that sort of stuff. Okay, anything else on damage caused by the tornado storm event 314-24?
Yes, the dumpster, but there's more.
Roofing?
Okay, for roofing, I was asked by the board to pursue some more information from Redtail and from the prosecutor's office. Now, based on past experience and my discussions, it is apparent to me that if we have situations such as we do now with the roof, that that can be taken independently from the rest of the building and dealt with because it's something that needs to be dealt with immediately. And it is something that's under $75,000. And if we use a vendor that is for roofs and does not do the other items, because it's different trades, we can pursue that now without having to deal with the bid or prevailing wages. I have not found this much clarity in my research and past experience regarding the siding. So I think that if the board is inclined to go with Redtail, I will ask them to give another look with the insurance information and to put together a quote that we can perhaps act on. It would be a contract, so we need to go to prosecutor's office for their signing off as to form. I don't know that that can all get accomplished by Monday. Need a special meeting to know that.
Something else that should be taken along with the roofing is the insulation.
Yes, I...
The insulation should be done at the same time. And you can get the insulation from below or above. And it's probably a lot easier to get it from above. If you take the boards off, it's necessary, pull the insulation out, put the new insulation in, put the board out, put the roof on. So you can do all that in one day. That would make life a lot easier.
So I had Redtail come out and do a more thorough inspection after they did their quote. And they did not see any reason for the insulation to be dealt with. And they did inspect this leak and recommended that tarp. And so I'm going to ask for a $350 appropriation because I haven't put that on because I was leaking into the fiscal officer's office, which was not good. But he didn't...
Through electric too.
Yes, yes. And so he indicated that there's no permanent damage. I mean, it's going to be staining.
But it's going to be moldy.
Right. He was not as sure about the, I'll call it exhaust fan, I don't really know what you call it. Above the...
Service bit?
Yes, the part that used to be broken, not the part that used to be fired. Above that, there is a fan that, I don't really know the term, but he had a term. That has a 10-year life. So he said that may need to be replaced, but that's not really part of this roof. But, but in order to get the moisture out of there, that thing needs to be working.
And it doesn't work?
Well, he didn't know. And so, I mean, that's not his expertise is roofing. And so I don't know the answer to that. And I'm not sure how to get the answer to that. But the roof and the insulation, well, the roof needs to be replaced. Insulation's okay. But not if we, if we deal with it now. So that...
I would point out that the fiscal officer's office, every desk, every all that sort of stuff, that had to come through the insulation. Insulation let it run. So that insulation will need to be replaced.
Well, he said it was the fiberglass kind and if this fan, that's what he said. He indicated that it's the fiberglass type. But if it does need replaced, we're well within our $75,000 limit. So that's roofing. When I dealt with the Columbus...
What do we need to do with the roofing?
Okay, so if you give me the verbal here, I'm going to pursue it with Redtail to try to get a quote, to get the contract to us that the prosecutor can look at by Monday. I don't know if that's going to happen. We might need another special meeting.
It's really, really urgent though.
Yep. And so to get them to answer the question, I thought it was fairly good to give that.
Yeah, that's really good.
But I did not get as much information regarding the siding.
Can you make a motion because you know the words and you know what needs to be...
Well, then you just make consensus right now.
Right. On Monday, I hope to have what we need to have a quote on. But if not, I think we're going to need a special meeting to approve the contract.
Okay.
I was unwilling to just have them write the contract and have us sign off on it. Because I do want the prosecutor to make sure it was known, the notification clause and whatnot. And I told them not to send the invoice to the fiscal officer's office regarding the $350 for the tarp. But they sent it to me, so I just, just now forwarded it to fiscal officers. But I, so I would like to make a motion on that to approve, I moved to approve appropriation of $350 to Redtail Roofing for the purpose of the tarp over the siding.
Call the local police.
Ray.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
So...
Thank you for pursuing that. And it would be wonderful, though reasonably expectations are set that it may not be feasible to get it by Monday.
Right.
But because, is there any way that they could prioritize us because we have roofed tarps and leaky?
So I asked about that. And if we approve it on Monday, they said most likely to.
So if some of the other services mentioned that they could do it in a week, is there any way that we could push back on that a little bit to...
I can try, but...
To say, hey, can we move up your list a little bit? Because there's, I know you have probably a lot on your plate, but ours is actually leaky.
Yep. I can try.
Okay.
And is it complete roof, roof repair, replacement?
Okay, the quote was sent on March 22nd. That gets you the rundown of what it is. Now, it's not all new USB cord. In fact, if that did replace them, that would be additional charge. But the, he looked at it and really, he said it's fine, but there might be here and there. And that's not that much money.
But what I know is it's all, all the shingles sort of be one color and they get all done. Won't look like a checkered roof.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm fine with getting as close to the color that's on there as possible. It doesn't have to be exact, but I don't think it should be like all black. You gotta feel a little warm. I like the color that's on there. Somewhere around that.
You know, I don't care about colors.
You don't until you see it.
Okay, does that cover the roofing?
That covers the roofing.
Siding.
Okay, so the siding, I was asked to speak with Columbus...
Roofing side?
Yes. Who was it? Columbus Roofing Siding. Oh, Columbus. I... I felt less confident in that one.
I, I think that we should actually move forward or pursue great roofing siding. They were the ones that had completed work in the pines already. And I thought that was the one we were following up with.
It wasn't, I mistook, but it might be a good thing that I mistook. I mean, not that I mistook, but that Columbus Roofing Siding isn't the one that...
Yeah.
I, I, I just, I just did not feel...
That's perfectly fine. Great Roofing Siding though, I think, they were the one that came in lower, lowest on the quote for the siding from what we received. So it was great roofing, siding was, I think it was around $30k. And then Redtail Roofing was the, was the cheapest for the roof. And so that combined kept us underneath 75. And that would be, that was what we had discussed at times.
Right, so...
Now we don't worry about that, right?
For the roof.
Yeah.
So what I'm unclear on is if other companies would give add-in to the siding, in addition to the siding. And I'm not sure that that covers the whole. And it certainly did not include the doors that need replaced. So...
Oh, the garage door.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so we need to pursue that more.
And that, like, so you're saying that all might be a $75,000 tally.
But the roof is excluded from it.
Which is nice. I mean, that's good, that's a good starting point. So now we need to gain clarity on if all of the rest of the project is one project or if the garage door is distinct from, the siding is distinct from. Okay. And that's what you'll get clarity on from prosecutor's office?
Yes, but I did not sense the urgency in him looking at that. The roof was...
Good.
But...
Okay. So I will, I will give you the number here for...
Can we look into the third page offset? Then the material that was used years ago? And I mean, that's been on there for 50 years, 40 years, and it's not, not too bad.
Yeah, something too.
It's Rip, or I think, Great Roofing Restoration, number is 4807890023. And he was in the area actually yesterday. He drove by and he gave me a call and he said, I just wanted you to know, I just gave a quick glance at the roof and everything looked good, which probably because Redtail had been out. And he was saying, let me know. And I, I called him back and I said that Trusty O'Brien would be contacting him. So it was like, okay.
And whatever the kind that was used in the pines, I don't think were wrong. Okay.
The kind of siding?
Because when you look around at the damages, there's a lot of damage. We have particular mature and under, been deep part of the pad. But it's just a, something that's a little more substantial, you probably have less trouble with long.
They did note on this side that the siding was a lot more brittle because of the sun. So I don't know, maybe, trying to get a new play on materials, I don't know. Maybe we should explore something related to the materials, given kind of our situation with the conditions.
If you could also explore if there's some outside coating? Because the whole north side of the building ends up turning green.
Yeah. We have a west side issue and north side issue, yeah.
Because it's been a bit sun.
I think we had somebody come and spread it out a couple of years ago.
We power washed it.
Oh, yeah, we got a power washer. We should purchase one.
I believe there's coatings that you can get in the material that...
That would be good, an algebra system.
Prevent about seven to do that in future.
Well, I think it would delay us having to do it. I don't think it would prevent. Because my understanding is that that usually lasts about 10 years and then it's... It's very similar to having not have it. But if you get it for 10 years, at least you've got something.
Okay. Do you need a motion or anything for that?
No, because I need to explore that. And I, well, but the other thing that I did want to ask you is, and there were some codes back here to look at. And I personally like some of the grays, but...
Oh, I think none of that.
Okay.
I'm perfectly fine.
Which is funny to hear, actually, I don't know.
I like, I like your style, that's great. Now, if we had the gray though, we have to kind of look at it in reference to the roof. We don't want too much gray.
Okay, let's, if we're done with item four, let's skip to item six. I believe item five probably has an executive session on, but just like to get to six and discuss, consider and take action regarding road matters. What was that about?
Okay, so I just wanted to inform you because there were some times that you weren't available. Jesse asked me, so I kind of, it's more for information that I were to be aware. So there had been a complaint in regards to North Road. Okay, so are you familiar with what happened there?
Sorry.
Not familiar with it.
Okay, so the problem is that when they county soil and water approved that pond, they approved a pond that hasn't an output. So when the water rises, it rises and it's going to come up to the road.
My understanding is it's in the catch base of, it's far above the road surface. And within a few inches, then the only way the water gets out is evaporation. There's no fountains or pumps or anything on that pond. So there's nothing speed, evaporation, it just evaporates off the surface. So, and I believe that the land from the city flows that way. So I think that pond gets flooded, not only from around the school and that sort of stuff, but it's getting flooded from the north pond that way. And I don't believe the county has got an item for fixing that.
They clearly did not have a plan.
And the, the original thought was that there was going to be a development there. For some reason, the development has stopped and there's no drainage, no way for the water to get out of the pond.
Yes.
And we have informed Jeff Gordon at the school, not writing, maybe we should do it writing, but which is that the water is on the road, which is in I-Large Lines and Code of Road.
Exactly. And that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Which means the school will be shut for that.
That's why I wanted to bring it up because it's a meaningful action that we'll have to do. And we will have to have the road closed. Of course, it's the town engineer who makes that decision, you know, closes roads. But we can't fix it because it's on private property.
Correct.
So that pond was built and soil and water reconnected. I believe the county engineer signed off on soil and water's plan. And so...
I did with Jesse, I'm going to look at Ray, what it to the school, saying, hey, this is where we're at. We're copying the county engineer, soil and water on. So this is where we're at with the whole thing. So it's, it's not a good situation.
All right, so it's definitely not ideal. The other consequence of that, as you well know, is that it needs to be ground saturated in that area, which makes the road vulnerable to deterioration. So it's clearly not a good situation, but it's one we remain aware of. Okay, another road issue that was dealt with recently was on Sherman Road. There was starting to be water flow that was going to perhaps erode part of the road. And so that was dealt with and was slightly off of the road right away. But we stopped direction. And the direction was if it's going to cause a minimum problem to the road, we had authority to deal with it. And I believe the landlord would be well pleased because we, but we didn't deal with it to help the landlord. We dealt with it to make sure our road did not...
That's correct.
...deteriorate and wash away. Because spending a couple hundred dollars saved us tens of thousands of dollars.
We didn't know it. What we did is we got it so the water wouldn't go down and the water went down quickly.
Yes.
Once the pipe was opened up. We talked with Doug Reedle and Doug wants us to get the trash out of the area. We're going to get the trash out of the area, then the county engineer will fix that. The, back out because that's their culprit, not our culprit. Just due to the size of it. And that should happen. He said there was, they were delaying a job by a day to be able to work on that for a day, to be able to fix it. And that should happen next week.
So the third road issue is Dale Ford. So where Brolin Farms outless. And that was only supposed to be, in a rare instance, would that be a problem?
Hundred year flood?
Yeah. Well, that was no hundred year flood. And it did not quite make a problem. But I observed it and that water was rising and it was getting really close to the road. And there was no one hundred year flood. So... I think the county needs to help us on that. Because that outlet needs to be enlarged underneath the road. And it's not our fault that they allowed that to be built. And...
My understanding was it was a dry up culvert, not the gap underneath the road.
When I saw, no. So it's, if that culvert underneath the road was enlarged, it would be our issue. But then is that really fair to all the landlords that is to the east of that? Because all of a sudden, they're going to have this gushing water that they didn't used to have. But the thing is, having that go over the road is really dangerous. And if that freezes, that is even more dangerous. So I mean, we have to deal with our issue and I think the county...
We need to know the water to get people sorted and there's some stuff.
When you send these letters, could you have, or maybe it will be Jesse, but could you have CC all of us?
Sure, absolutely.
I think that'd be great.
Unfortunately, it was not a real problem. Now, the landlords around it were upset because they never had that water in their yard before. And that's true. But it wasn't a ditch, it was, I mean, it was within the road block. And so, but I totally understand where they're coming from. And it's not illegal what is happening, but...
But the flow rate, what the county engineer almost tells us is the flow rate won't be any more than what it was in the past.
But that clearly was not true.
That's clearly not true, this case.
Yes.
You know, and that, and that it will fall for a longer period. You know, and that it will fall for longer periods of time.
And that's okay, yeah.
Which we're okay with, but that increased flow rate.
Right.
Because that's what's causing the problem.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's all I have for roads.
So we got two roads, two lawyers. I got one thing, which is we got the shippers, had the guys watch on the safety videos and that sort of stuff. I'm using the shippers, so they should start next week whether permitting, picking up. There's one huge pile over on Three B's and a K. I don't know if you've noticed it, just south of Johnny K, corners, the development there. And that'll be several truck trucks and stuff that got drove out. Even the trees were close to the road and maybe they'd gone the road, but now they're cut up real nice and deep. They're all, there's a big amount of pine and trash that will get shipped and got rid of. And the thing is, if you drew around the circle and harder point, you see a bunch of trees that are weaning over. What's the only solution really for those is to cut. And those will end up putting the road to the street, I'm afraid. But they shouldn't really be taken out of place. Pine trees are nice, but from the ground's wet, they don't have any strength on the restructure. That's really all I've got on the...
So on the number I, I don't know that we need an executive session, but I would like consensus.
Hang on, just one other thing. We've got the issue with the Sopperfield parking lot, which is a road issue too. Are you aware?
That is not, I would not say that's a road issue. I would say that's a zoning issue. And I will have an update on Monday for, from that.
Well, the immediate solution is park on the street. And I'd suggest that possibly contacting the school and possibly using the middle school parking lot. But that means you gotta cross the road in order to get there. Plus, you gotta go through the construction site to get there. They don't really like doing that sort of stuff. But that means people will probably end up parking in the development, so we're coming in for that. Just a little, let y'all know. Okay, number five.
So I would like the board consensus to contact Diane McDowell and start a process of search for personal.
You're looking for motion or are you looking for...
No, just because I'll bring it forward on Monday, but I didn't want to just go off on my own and just do that. Although I have authority to do that and I don't see it as a duty that since we're moving. But she did a very good job and she searched for the chief last time. And I just think that her services would be helpful in this situation.
So do you need money to be able to advertise or anything or...
Well, on Monday I probably will, but I just want to get an okay to talk with her and then find out from her how much I should ask for.
I thought she was very competent and capable. So I would definitely support that.
Okay, so do you want to search?
Perhaps yes.
So does that cover the point or...
For tonight, yes.
Okay, so then at this point, we're ready to adjourn, I believe. That's correct? Everybody clear? Come on.
All right, we'll adjourn.
Make them want to adjourn.
Seven.
Call the local office.
O'Brien, yes. Ray?
Yes.
Forward.
Yes. Do you adjourn?
I haven't looked yet. Do we have the agenda for...